The public hearing in the matter of revising the street improvement standards ordinance 91-2, the zoning ordinance, or parts of the zoning ordinance, ordinance 95-4, and the subdivision ordinance, or number 95-5. The purpose is to conform our ordinances to the policies adopted with the recent transportation system plan. The hearing is now open. In this hearing, Planning Commission will decide whether to recommend the ordinance revisions to City Council for adoption. We can take public testimony today. We are going to proceed section by section, and we're going to have staff kind of guide us through the language for each section. And in my ideal world, I'm hoping that the commission can come to consensus on each section so that we don't have to go back and revisit or do a large motion at the end. So let's see, did we get Scott or Leila, did we get any letters from anybody on this?
I didn't receive any. Scott, Deb, her, did we get anything?
Karen, no, I didn't receive anything on this.
Okay, great. So nothing is on the record yet. Okay, so I think we're ready to proceed. You know what? I forgot to do the minutes. Let's do that at the end.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, let me write myself a note to do that at the end. And do we have any public that want to speak about any issues not on the agenda today?
Karen, I have one hand raised.
Okay.
Joy, you should be able to unmute yourself. Well, I think we just lost Joy. Nope, there she is. Joy, if you'd like to speak, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. And does it look like, she might have had her hand up by accident.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, Leila, are you going to walk us through the staff memo or?
I am, and I just figured I'd put it up on the screen.
Thank you.
I think I've had it for quite a while, but that way we could just kind of walk through it together. So why don't I go ahead and do that? Can you see that? And do you see my cursor moving around? I want to make sure that I move it. When I move it, is it moving? Yes. Is the screen or the text moving?
Yes, Leila, would we, could you possibly make that a little larger?
I can. That was my next question. It's probably under 50. How's that?
That's better for me.
Leila, is that, is that okay? Want to make sure everyone can see it?
Can you, can you go up another notch, please?
Yeah, let's see what we can do here. Oops. Other way. Another way. That work?
That's great, thank you.
That's good.
Okay, you bet, no problem. Thanks for asking. Trying to get my screen here. Okay. So just kind of a quick overview where we are and how to read the document. So these amendments are intended to implement the goals and objectives of the transportation system plan, which City Council held its first public hearing last week, and did their first reading of the ordinance. So process-wise, for ordinances in the city of Manzanita, they have to be read twice. So the next reading will be in December. And presumably, if that's approved, then the ordinance goes into effect 30 days from the date of the second reading. And so we anticipate that by the end of January, we'll officially have a new Goal 12 and changes to Goal 11 of the conference plan. So yay. The ordinance amendments, again, as the chair noted, this covers three ordinances. We'll go through them one by one, starting with the street improvement standards. I do want to note that we had a first draft of these ordinances, which were share, I'm sorry, these ordinance changes, amendments, a couple of months ago, I think four or five months ago, that were developed by the consultants and then stabbed at a set of second deep dive into them and made several changes to those to both reflect kind of our current condition. And oftentimes this happens where you get recommendations from a consultant who maybe hasn't been on the ground here. So the first one I'll talk about is sidewalks. So we made several changes to that and also to reflect some input that we received from some members of the Planning Commission. So I'll try to cover that, but commissioners, if I don't fully cover or represent your comments, I just invite you to speak up at any time. So the strikeout language in black indicates this is the language we are proposing to remove from the ordinance, the current ordinance. The underlined language in black indicates language that we would like to add to the ordinance. And then I wanted to show for the commission members as well as the public the changes that staff made to the APG's kind of original set of recommendations. And those are in a red line strikeout so that you can see that or red line underline. So you just sort of see that what we put in there that's different than what the original consultant made. And then the memorandum, which is up on the city's website as well. I'm trying to provide a little commentary just for you all as you were reviewing the ordinance to see what and why those changes were made. So any questions about that? Great. So we'll move to Section 3 of Ordinance 91-2, which relates to street width. The current language here, as you can see, the table below identifies general widths of arterial collector and residential streets. So there's a section of this that struck out. One of the actions that was taken in adopting the TSP was rescinding the downtown transportation plan and adopting Volume 2 of the TSP by reference. So we're replacing essentially the TSP with the downtown transportation plan with the TSP. So the chart here reflects, you can see, this is the current chart that's in our ordinance. This is a much more detailed chart. This aligns with a lot of the cross-sections that are actually in the TSP. And based on feedback from both at least one planning commissioner and staff, we made some adjustments to this chart from what the consultant provided. So we still maintain like arterial collector and residential were the typologies that we used, that were used in the ordinance previously. The TSP refers to those as a major collector, a minor collector, a local street, and then we have two kind of subcategories of local streets, those with a share-o. And for those that aren't familiar with that terminology, a share-o is a street where a bicycle actually has legal right to take the full road so they can drive, ride their bike in the middle of the road, and cars have to yield to them just like they were a vehicle in the road. And then a local road with an advisory bike lane. So an example of that is what's on Carmel. It's an advisory bike lane. It's straight. And specific to bike, in this case on that road, we have both bike and ped. It identifies the right-of-way. So this is the full kind of edge of property of the right-of-way. How many travel lanes would be in each of these typologies? In the minimum lane width, the consultant originally proposed 22. Our actual on-the-ground reality is 20. Whether or not there's a center turn lane, so none of our typologies have that. On-street parking, so this was a note that we wanted to make sure reflected that local streets should have on-street parking. Although we left on-street parking off the local with advisory bike lane, it doesn't mean we can't have it, but oftentimes there's not enough right-of-way. It's kind of got to be one or the other. So we left that off, but we're open to hearing more feedback on that. Whether or not a bike facility exists, and if so, what the recommended width of that facility should be. And the same with a sidewalk. And as you can see, the only street typology that requires a sidewalk is a major collector. The only major collector we have in the city is Lenida. And then finally, a planter or buffer on one side. And we have that assigned as 2 feet for a minor collector, and then the other typologies do not. So I'll pause there. I think the best way to do this, like the chair says, we can go through section by section. And I have Dan here as well from Public Works. He's our street guy as well. So if you have any thoughts, comments, suggestions, changes, my staff's happy to hear. You see Bert's hand up. I don't know. You want me to call on folks or not, Karen, but I can.
Yeah, thank you. That would be great because I'm reading the screen and not paying attention.
Okay, great, yeah. So I'll be happy. I just want to overstep my bounds.
Yep.
But yeah, if you have comments, just raise your hand or something. Bert, yes, please.
Okay, it's official. I've got a few comments. One is just a typo, which I think is in the applicability section. It says seat map 12, but I think it's actually figure 12 in the local with sharos and local with advisory bike lane. So see figure 12 maybe instead of map 12.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then I think I just need clarification on the right-of-ways. And I don't know if the, if staff is suggesting, for instance, that parking and bike lanes would be on the private property on local streets and stuff like that, or exactly what's being suggested there. So for instance, if we look at the minor collector, the right-of-way is 36 feet. But unless I'm doing my math wrong, all these numbers add up to 50 feet. And that would be kind of what the local street right-of-way is currently, 50 feet. So maybe that, you could clarify that for me, is the intent that the right-of-way in the future only take into account the drivelines?
I see Dan, so I'll let him talk. Yes, great question.
Essentially, for the right-of-way, a minor collector would be 40 feet. You'll notice on the thing they originally called out 36 feet, but 40 feet would keep the, what we have been using. The travel lanes for a minor collector would be 11-foot travel lanes, and they have 10s listed. We'll see if I'm following the right one here.
Right here?
Lane width would be 11 feet, Dan?
Yes.
Minimum lane width?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm sorry for major collector. So minor collectors are the 10-foot travel lanes. And then essentially what we end up with is two 8-foot wide parking spots on both sides. But as Leila pointed out, we have the extra footage in a minor collector for a right-of-way of 40 feet. So that note did not make it in there, I don't think. So for minor collector, it should be, they have on here 36 feet, it should be 40 feet.
We made that change.
Okay, so just if you can add these up for me, that's 20 feet for the lanes.
Yep.
Okay, I assume that's parking on both sides of the street, so that would be...
That allows for parking on both sides, or a bike facility, or a essentially planter or buffer. So you end up with an extra couple of feet in the right-of-way to be able to make those alterations for it.
Okay, so, so I've got 20 feet, 36 feet if there's parking on both sides, and no bike lane on minor collectors, is what you're saying?
Yep.
And then 2 feet, or no parking, you get one or the other.
And you have, you have to remember too, in our construction style and standards, we also have an 18-inch gutter so that will also be, can be put into that buffer area. So that gives you, essentially that extra space gives you the ability to alter what you want to do, be it for pedestrian lanes, vegetation buffers, concrete gutters, or if there's something else that's needed for storm drainage.
So that, that gives you the 40 feet if you have parking on both sides. And if, if you want a bike lane, you get rid of all the parking, is what you're saying? And you have 12 feet of bike lanes?
Yeah, you can, you can move it around, just like what with Carmel, how Carmel came out as laying out. Carmel is, South Carmel is a 40-foot right-of-way.
Okay. Okay, well, I think as long as the commission for a minor collector is cool with either parking or the bike lanes, it seems fine with just correcting the numbers here. Now, if we go down to the local, that, at least on the screen I've got, that's 22 feet of right-of-way. And then I'm getting 20 feet of driveline. And then this has 8 feet in local, which would be 36, or parking, excuse me. So that'd be 36 instead of 22 for the right-of-way.
Yeah, the right-of-way there should be marked 40 foot as well. I think some of the edits fell off.
Okay.
Yeah, really. Thanks.
That, that makes me much happier.
All 3 of you, Dan?
Yep.
Yeah.
I thought my math was really bad, but...
No, 40 foot is pretty much our standard right-of-way. The place where it has to be bigger is for the major collector, which is like Lenida when you're having sidewalks plus off-street parking.
Sure. Okay. All right, I don't have any other questions on this one, then.
John, I see your hand raised.
I just had, actually, Bert asked two of my questions. I noticed that we have travel lane identified as one for all the three local conditions. But that doesn't preclude two-way traffic in any way. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Okay.
But, but John, I think that's a good question, John, because doesn't the fire department want at least 20 feet of paving?
Or 20 or 22. Well, 12 if they, if it's one way, I believe, but...
I, I think that, that should be reviewed to make sure, because traditionally in the work I've done is 20 feet for roads.
Yeah, and, and that is, that's here, and we will have fire take a look at these too. Although I think they have, but we'll double check. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, we have a 40-foot right-of-way, the 10-foot local with 6-foot advisory bike lanes. So if those are on both sides of the street, then you have 22 feet.
Yeah, local, so if you do a local, it'd be 20 feet of travel lane, and then you're 2 6-foot. So it would, once again, would come out kind of like Carmel, because the right-of-way still would be a 40-foot right-of-way.
Dan, are the curb gutters part of the roadway or are they outboard of the roadways?
They are outboard of the road, of the roadway.
Okay. And we are, you know, we've got NA with all the local roads in terms of sidewalks. And Leila, you were pretty clear about how we have a yield-only sort of right-of-way for pedestrians. And it sounded as though we had no plans to make any sort of sidewalk here. And frankly, I'm not sure we need it. I kind of agree with you that... And I, I'm out walking a lot, and vehicles are pretty good about moving over when somebody's walking along the sidewalk. I mean, we have a fairly respectful group of vehicles driving around on our streets. You know, exceptions to all the rules. And I know we've talked about slowing things down a little bit from 25 to 20, which I'm all in favor of. And you have been proactive about the issue of parking recently. And is, I'm assuming that is something that will be brought up during the comprehensive planning as well. So I'm just throwing that out there for all the commissioners. But I think our little table here and our little discussion that we've just gone through is pretty indicative of the conditions we have, and they serve us pretty well right now.
You know, maybe, Dan, you might just verify that, that the local and local with sharos shouldn't say 2 lanes? And then the minimum lane width would be 10 feet and 10 feet? Or are you saying the locals, it's a little unclear? I mean, traditionally, in my experience, you have either a 10, 11, or 12-foot lane width, and then you have one or two, you know, lanes. So whatever you think is going to be the clearest.
Yeah, I think, and Dan, you can jump in here too, but I think the difference is, so on a major or minor collector, they're striped. So there's actually striping in the lane, whereas on a local street, they're not striped. And so that's why it's, it's one lane, but it's 20 feet, because we're trying to accommodate two vehicles to be able to travel in the same lane, but we don't stripe it.
Okay, that's clear.
I have another quick question for Dan. Could you identify those? I mean, Lenida is our only major collector, or is Carmel considered a major collector as well?
Nope, just Lenida.
Just Lenida. And could you identify the minor collectors?
I could. It's also in the traffic, the TSP. There's a lovely map that Leila probably can grab quicker than I can that shows.
I knew there was one, but...
It's going to be essentially your streets like Classic, Carmel. I'll just let her throw the map up, but it was, I believe, Classic, Carmel, and Ocean, Ocean Road. Which Ocean Road unfortunately is not a city street.
Is that a?
County, county right-of-way. Yep.
Can you see the TSP now?
Yep, there it is.
There it is.
Okay. So... This is like, so Dan mentions Lenida. You can see Ocean Roads outside the city limits. Carmel to beach to sunset to Sitka, that loop. I think we're all probably pretty familiar with that. Nahalum, Sandpiper, Gary, Nakarni, and then Classic Street.
Is... Classic is within the city limits?
That is correct.
It is indeed, yes.
What about Sitka and Nakarni and...?
These are not.
Those are not, okay.
They're in the urban area, but they're not in the city limits.
Okay. Okay. So we're really talking about Lenida as a major and Carmel as a minor.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If it's in the UGA, does the city have control over the street standards?
Yes, we do. County, when county has it reconstructed, they, they build it, or they have the developer build it to meet the city standards.
Yeah, we just don't maintain. Sorry, I was nodding my head because I was thinking you were going to ask, are we in charge of them? And we're not. But we do have, same with our zoning, it applies in the UGB, but not... And we usually, we provide a land use review and approval, but the county actually issues those permits.
Leila? Phil Mannan, how is Manzanita Avenue classified?
It is a local street.
Okay.
It's right here. Now that I have that up, we can pull it up anytime we need it.
Are there any more questions on the lane widths, width of this? Sorry. All right, let's, let's move forward. I think we're waiting for a fire review of these before they can be finalized. But otherwise, are we satisfied with the revisions that we've made today? And it's clear enough what we mean by each of those lanes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm just going to assume yes unless somebody leaps out. Okay, let's keep going. What's next?
On to the next, okay. Okay, so this kind of getting what John mentioned is that you'll see a lot of red lining here. But these changes, I think, reflect the real typology that we have, which is a yield roadway system. It's actually not consistent with the goals of the TSP to institute sidewalks. And it would be really problematic from just a store and water management standpoint, as well as affordable housing, because the cost of instituting sidewalks is actually really pretty darn high. And there was some feedback from Commissioner to add the word, should say word, not work, streetscape to encourage development of pedestrian-friendly design. I thought that was a great suggestion, so we added that in here. So the main change here is adding all major collector streets, so that's basically Lenida. Should include sidewalks, streetscape, and bikeways constructed to city standards. Then I deleted all of this because it references sidewalks. And then left in the mid-block pedestrian connections. We actually have a few of these throughout the city. And I think they function really well. And if in our areas that are in the UGB that are developing, there's potential to add mid-block pedestrian connections. I think we want to encourage that. So this gives Planning Commission, the city, a little more leeway to require those and to provide access to schools, parks, shopping centers, public transportation stops, or other community services. So this could actually be on existing property too within the city. So if there's a large enough lot that redevelops and we feel like a pedestrian connection would be useful for any of these items, we can require that. So...
Leila?
I can't get all of it on one page, but here you go. I see John and Tom. I'm not sure who is... I see John and Tom. I'm not sure who is first, so.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, you need a comma between parks and shopping center.
So I do. Thank you. Got it.
That's my noteworthy contribution to this exercise.
Thank you, Tom.
Deeply valued. Thanks. John?
Just a quick clarification. Could you, when you say a mid-block connector, you're talking about two, a connector between two parallel streets that isn't a roadway for sure and may not even be a right of way. I mean, we've got several around town that are right of ways that are kind of defined by the city as being able to walk through, but um, if I understand correctly, you're talking about even through private property? If we can get that during a development phase? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. So you'd get a potentially an easement through a pedestrian easement.
Perfect. Thank you.
Frank, did you have a question?
No, I didn't. I'm good with it. Yeah.
The other questions or is everyone sort of thumbs up on this section?
Looks good.
Okay. We keep scrolling. Okay, now we're into the zoning ordinance. Uh, we're starting with section four point zero one zero access. I think we're going to have a conversation about this. Um. So the section that was really focused on here is with respect to block sizes. So, um staff added some additional language here to kind of reflect what I felt like was the intent and goal of the T S P, which is to, you know, extend a grid pattern. And so grid patterns, you know, traditionally from an urban design perspective, uh, encourage bike walk. They also relieve pressure on major arterials when you have alternate or redundant transportation network. Um. You know, the comment was made, and I concur, that a thousand block foot length is uh for a block is really long. It's if you've been in Portland and think it has one of the best grids in the world, like that's five city blocks. Um. We currently have some areas of the city that are like that. So the proposal from our consultant and just from staff's review of it, what is existing, we left the maximum block length is a thousand feet, but I'm I'm open to discussion on this. Um, just know it couldn't be applied to existing development, but it is something that we can certainly start to look at with new development. Um, the main place that this would impact obviously is in our U G B, um, because we don't have a lot of uh, I I don't want to say any because I haven't done the analysis, but I'm pretty sure there's not many, if any, places in the city where this would be applicable, where it's already developed. Um, and I heard from, so we did make some changes in terms of minimum block length and made those smaller. That that was a really good suggestion. And I know that Bert, I think you had some diagrams you wanted to share with the commission on this. I want to give you that opportunity if you're interested. So I'm going to stop sharing. And
Okay, well. You know, I've been working on this for twenty years on all sorts of different um public health and safety and uh design aspects about the minimum block length. And it's a pretty big issue in the public health community and a pretty big issue in the uh uh kind of safety issue in terms of fire access uh and escape routes. And so when you have these long blocks and all that kind of stuff, first it promotes speed. So a thousand-foot block, that's longer than the intersection minimum intersection requirement on the forty mile an hour one oh one that's going through our city. And uh it's just not reasonable anymore. And even the state, uh, their guidelines for block length is six hundred feet. And so I I really think this is an opportunity to promote a walkable and bikeable community. And think about it for the next thirty years or forty years, or, you know, maybe the U G A is going to expand at some point. So we really want to get it set up so that we have good connectivity and a scale that's uh more like central Manzanita, to be honest with you. So that's kind of my pitch. And of course, as an architect, I have to create diagrams. So I've done that. And so I'll share my screen just to give you an idea how big a thousand feet is compared to what it is nationally. So here we go. So here's a block length diagram that essentially gives block sizes around the United States. And I'll start with this one right here. Because uh between uh Leda and Manzanita and second and third, that's a four hundred and twenty-five foot by two hundred foot block, which is a very walkable block, right? Uh, Portland is right here. That's a two hundred by two hundred. Obviously, you know, that was set up a hundred and some years ago. Uh, this is a thousand feet as an example, and I don't think anybody would ever do that, but it's not a reasonable thing to have as our policy. Here's if anybody's been to Salt Lake and has tried to walk in Salt Lake, that's six hundred feet. So if you look at this, uh, historically, uh, you know, all the great walkable neighborhoods have small blocks. And I just can't support a thousand feet as the policy for Manzanita because it doesn't make any sense. So my suggestion would be to kind of lop that in two. And uh set a five hundred by five hundred foot block length. And then typically in the United States, the most advanced planning and land use codes have a width also for the block. And so five hundred by two fifty is the maximum makes sense to me. That would allow in the future uh an alley development, for instance. And uh should the city through its comprehensive plan decide to shrink lots? Perhaps narrower lots? Then that would provide for alley access housing, uh, ADUs and other things and not develop kind of what's called snout houses, which is uh a double car garage with a door on the side down a full block block length. So, uh, you know, Metro, uh, there two hundred by five hundred and fifty feet, the state of Oregon, no longer than six hundred feet. So this is why I'm suggesting that that section be modified uh to be slightly different, but a big difference, which would be five hundred foot maximum length and then a two hundred and fifty foot maximum width. And already in the ordinance is a suggestion for a hundred foot minimum width, which makes sense. So that's my pitch.
Makes a lot of sense.
Mm hmm. I just want to note that you said snout houses, and that's awesome. Not many people.
Well, I think for the comprehensive plan, uh, uh, as that goes through and the community talks about that and affordability of housing and stuff, you know, lot size is a really big determinant of affordability. And uh, anyway, our firm did the first alley house uh in King County, Washington, you know, in like thirty years. So it's really a walkable neighborhood. So anyway, this is my suggestion that this become the standard. And then if there's a devian deviation from that, then there's a conversation. Rather than a thousand feet and that's legal, and then you have to kind of arm wrestle to get into a walkable neighborhood.
I saw it. It's hard because you're all tiny now. Um, is that you, John?
Yeah, uh, I did have a question, and I don't know if it, maybe I'll just throw it out there. It's probably a question for Bert, but um based on the fact that Manzanita is mostly built out at this point, um, I guess there is some oops. Some parts of the city that isn't. I I like your either five hundred or six hundred feet in terms of the um minimum.
Maximum, it'd be the max.
Excuse me, maximum or or just standard block. I'm assuming if you say a five hundred foot standard block, that is a maximum, and it could be a two hundred and fifty by two hundred and fifty block.
Yeah, or some other configuration.
Or some other configuration. Our standard right now is kind of two hundred feet. Um.
It it the standard, yes, two hundred by, well, whatever standard is, but the old, most of the central Manzanita along Leda is, you know, two hundred by four twenty-five or a little longer.
Something four hundred, four twenty-five, right? Um. Does it make, if we're looking at alley lots in the future, then I guess you pretty much have to build an alley. But most of the town doesn't have that. Does it make more sense to go five hundred by two hundred for our standard lot?
I I don't think so. I think you you want to give the flexibility that, you know, someday in the future, somebody may want to do some alley housing and
Okay.
Yeah, you know, they'll they'll size it if the minimum's a hundred, then they'll they'll size it according to kind of their market and the topography and stuff like that.
Right.
Um, yeah, and if I could just quickly clarify too, that we're not talking about lot size. We're talking about block size. So lot size will actually be a pretty important and um kind of significant conversation that will be happening. Um, particularly with the residential uh middle housing code discussions that we'll be having as a community in the comprehensive plan. So I I know you know that, but I just want to clarify for you and anybody else who's watching. There's a a big difference, right? The block is the block and the block has lots. And so those kinds of urban design issues with respect to requirements for alleys or things like that would actually be done um through the process when we start talking about um lot size and housing. So I just want to clarify that for, I know you know that, John, but just for members of the community, that what we're talking about here is a block size.
Right. My question was, do we? I mean, if if they're are we saying this is an actual standard or are we saying this is the either minimum or maximum standard? I'm trying to figure out.
My suggestion is that it's it is a standard uh that, you know, block maximum length could be five hundred feet. It could be four hundred feet or two hundred and fifty depending on the developer.
Proposing a max.
A max of five hundred feet, right? If they exceed five hundred feet, then that would be a discussion with the planning commission about that.
A variance, yeah.
That's right, variance.
Does the commissioner or staff have an opinion on, say, if anything over two hundred or two hundred and fifty feet uh for a block should have a mandatory pedestrian walk down the middle of it? Or is that a discussion for a different issue?
Yeah, I think I think the staff could discuss it, but in in the communities that I've done is that, uh, you know, five hundred is pretty long and but that's a, you know, that's a reasonable thing in in the environment we live in. Uh, I have recently done a new community in Steamboat Springs, which did actually have a easement, a ten-foot wide easement down the center of the block and alleys to make it a very uh porous kind of a block, but I don't think that's necessary here.
Would it be okay if we um stop sharing? Is that okay with the commission? So you guys can see each other and continue to discuss and if we need to pull, okay. Right. I was like looking at you with my spy glass.
So I yeah, I think Tom had um had a question as well, but my question is, how do we determine which is the length and which is the width? Is it the streets? Whatever the street frontage is, is either five hundred or two fifty? Is it an east-west or north-south kind of a? How does, how do you determine, assuming that you want to do a, you know, a standard block of five, five hundred or six hundred and either a two fifty or three hundred foot um side?
I I think that'd be subject to the applicant and discussions with staff, but uh the tradition is that the longer part of a block is called the length and the shorter part of the block is called the width. And so that controls the overall size of the block. In many communities, there's also a maximum block length, which is the measurement all the way around the block. But I think in our case, if we set this uh two fifty by five hundred, that'd be a fifteen hundred foot maximum block length, which is characteristically fairly common uh throughout the United States in in new uh zoning codes.
Dan, did you want to say anything? I saw your camera come on. And Karen, I'm sorry, if you had a follow-up, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
No, I'm I'm done.
The only thing I would add is is one of the Manzanita's biggest characteristics over the years is is our kind of irregular uh roadway pattern system. Um, as a firefighter in this town, it drove, it's drove me nuts because the way it connects, but it is also what makes Manzanita that. And I think the block size you guys are currently talking at the two hundred by five hundred feet, you know, block width and and such. Hopefully, those are your maxes, maximums, but still remain a hundred foot minimums. Um. Because most of your your roads north of Manzi Avenue are pretty good length and they seem to work out well for Manzanita. So I just want to kind of throw that that two cents in there. So is a thousand feet super length? Well, you know, really long? Yeah, I think so. Um, it's pretty long, but it's also some of the streets we do have that give us our characteristics.
Um, I was going to suggest after Tom, um, because he's been patient, that if there are any people who are listening, um, who have a a comment on this, because it is a pretty big change to cut the block size in half from what we're used to. So I'd love to hear if there's any additional commentary after Tom asks his question or comments.
Um, I'm up. So I've never thought about block length in my life until now. I am totally persuaded by Bert's summary of the benefits from smaller blocks. And so my only question to him is uh have you compromised too much in your suggestion here? Should it be even smaller? I I mean, what I'm wondering is if you would prefer something even smaller than two fifty, five hundred, except uh that it's such a change from where we are now that you didn't think you could go that far? In which case I might push you there.
Uh, I I think that two fifty by five hundred gives enough flexibility for curvy roads and other stuff like that. And so uh, yeah, I love the uh walkability of a four hundred and twenty-five foot block, which is between Manzanita and Leda. That that's a nice length, you know? And uh, two hundred and fifty feet, that's a, that's a very comfortable distance and uh longer than in Portland, shorter than in Seattle. So I think, you know, uh, kind of that five hundred foot is probably okay. And in many cases, because of the configuration of the parcel, they may shrink that. Okay.
And on the fly here, um. Can you see my screen? Okay? So I'm going to write what I feel like I'm hearing.
Well, I I think on the arterial, if if you look down below, uh, and this is maybe where uh you folks can help me a little bit. When I look at an arterial, arterial, that's really highway one oh one, right?
Right. And collector are the streets we showed you on that map.
Right. So the arterial probably wants to be, you know, it it's saying the maximum block length is a thousand, but the standard urban spacing, which I think all the 101 in our community would be classified urban, wouldn't it? I'm guessing.
Do you know? I think we're classified as rural.
You know, I'm not sure on that. I think we are classified as as rural, but I'd have to look into it more.
Right. Isn't the speed limit 40 miles an hour all through Manzanita essentially?
It is.
It is.
So one suggestion would be just to tie it to the speed on 101. And say for the arterial, it's 800 feet.
That's the urban standard. So perhaps we can confirm that. But I think we're rural and if we're not, so it could either be 990 or 800, depending on what our actual classification is.
All right. Well, that that seems good. And then for the.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, that 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 kind of works. I think, you know, uh someday the other side of 101 might. Be showing up on somebody's radar, I suspect. Uh the Collector then I think. Uh. You know, I think that should be 500 feet and then, you know, the uh residential should be 500 feet. But as you can see, when you get to 25 and lower, it drops down to 350 for the standard. Curve or intersection uh geometry. So.
That's good.
I I uh 5 500, yeah.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at the standard.
And that'd be.
And then are we gonna?
That'd be the maximum. And then once again, you know, uh. I can give some variability as well as it can be smaller than that, as long as it doesn't drop below the minimum that you guys have identified.
And are you comfortable with these minimums here? Or do we want to? Whoops, sorry. Make any edits to those.
Leila, I can't read those.
Yeah, I can't either.
Oh.
Can you read them off to us?
Yeah, it's minimum block length for arterial is 100 feet. Collector is 100 feet. Residential is 100 feet. So it's 100 feet across the board. I think these were.
Okay. I I think that should say minimum block width, uh perhaps instead of length, because you've got maximum. Or or.
I'm not sure. I I think based on what you said earlier, Bert, I think they should be length.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, it should be length and then there should be another asterix that says. The maximum block width would be uh 250 feet below this chart.
Right.
And maybe maybe that should be minimum block length and width. I don't think anybody's going to do 100 by 100 foot block, but. That sets kind of the minimum.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So I'm comfortable with that. I mean, it's great suggestion. I just wanted you guys to talk about this, so I'm glad you did, but. Let's say from staff's perspective, I, you know, just as a planner, urban design, you know, I support that change too, so. It's a good suggestion. Okay. Um. This is just adding the spacing standards. This comes from the OHP, so the Oregon Highway Plan, so we don't. You know, just to be aware of it, we don't really get to amend that. Um. But if you have any comments, I'd be happy to hear those. Okay.
Um can I ask a quick question on that? Um I'm assuming that the OHP doesn't change very often, but. Do we need a um? Just a wiggle word in there? You know, instead of as indicated, as you know, as is currently. Indicated or something like that, so that we can change that if the plan changes?
Yeah, I'll make a note to add some language here.
If you just say current per Oregon Highway Plan, does that not cover it? So whatever the current would be. If they change it.
Yeah, I think that could work. Um.
The current or Oregon Highway Plan.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Mm hmm. Um.
Right there. There you go.
Okay. And then we can just. Monitor that and then amend. I think we need to have standards in the plan. Um but we can look at that. Maybe we take the table out and just provide that as a reference. Um. Okay, it's a good suggestion. Anything else?
Like just uh uh just another kind of comment and and this in your uh your earlier section about connectivity before all this stuff. That you had made the modification, I think uh. Maybe it was uh one section up there. Where was the one about? Yeah, I think it's that one, right? Uh.
This is about um, yeah, we didn't talk about this in detail, so let's make sure it still reflects. What y'all were talking about, which is proposed block length and access spacing spacing, excuse me, shall extend. The existing grid pattern where present, a grid pattern shall be established for new development, proposed block lengths that differ from the standards below. Shall include a proposed traffic plan stamped by a licensed engineer. And so. Um that was written when we had the 1000 foot blocks. Um open to suggestions here. It does provide. Planning Commission a little flexibility. So if someone proposes a 525 foot block. And it um. Because it lines up better with existing development, we wanted you to have some. Flexibility in making that determination. Uh. But I'm open to your feedback and suggestions.
Uh this is maybe uh since Dan's a firefighter, which could go into because uh. You know, all the developments that I have been part of have always required two means of egress. From a subdivision or a flat. Uh and I think in in the world we live in today, uh where obviously wildfire. Uh can be potentially an issue. But um I don't know if we need language in here to encourage that. I think maybe the uh. Uh a grid pattern, grid pattern shall be established for new development and uh. You know. Maybe.
You have a requirement and I have to check if it's on the fire side, or I believe it's on our planning side. That does require if a block is greater, a certain length or a certain amount of homes. It is required to have a means of egress, a second means. So good, good example was during the development of the back nine, they actually had to put in a gravel road. Uh to create that second means of egress until it could be constructed.
Okay, so that that is probably already covered then, maybe.
Yeah. And Leila, do you remember what that was written on in? I believe it's in our planning code. I think Frank's trying to speak.
I don't remember.
Oh. Oh, I was going to say that with what Bert's talking about, doesn't this covered um under the? In the red there, it says the table below shall include a proposed traffic plan stamped by a licensed engineer. So if there was anything that we were concerned about. Wouldn't that be covered there? Because there would be a proposed traffic plan that would be put into play. For any of these developments that are we're talking about going forward. So I think the language is in there to cover that. Well, I mean, it doesn't say specific what it would have to do, but if there would be a proposed traffic plan and who controls the proposal. Of what what is needed.
Yeah, that's a question. I think ultimately the fire marshal rules all as it comes to safety.
Yes. Yeah, so it's it's saying you can't just willy nilly around it. It has to be a proposed traffic plan and it has to be approved and stamped.
That's correct. And and we would also, you know, for anything that would be putting blocks into place, right? That would be. Uh a planning commission review would require a pre-application. Preapplication. Uh the fire chief is at those meetings and so provides. Guidance and requirements to the applicant um during the preapplication. So. Uh we try to put these checks and balances in place prior to becoming. Coming before the planning commission. So the fire chief would review those plans before you saw them. Um so that we don't, you know, we don't want to give you incomplete information like, hey, this looks cool and fire chief doesn't like it. Uh. So that's how our process works is they're involved in the preapplication. Uh but I think you're right, Frank, that um. Any licensed engineer worth his salt is gonna or her salt or their salt is going to. Um make sure that the. The fire requirements are met.
Do we even need this third sentence? I mean, anybody can come in and propose a variance, right? I mean, would.
Yeah, but the uh. Again, I mean.
My my problem.
Variance has a pretty high bar to meet in terms of.
Well, I guess my problem with this sentence is it it suggests that you. Go ahead and propose something different and and it doesn't suggest. What criteria we would use to. Grant it. Just says, give us a proposal and make sure it includes a. Traffic plan. And then and then what? How do we? Okay, you got a traffic plan. Why? Well, what do we do with it?
Yeah, but isn't it spelled out there? Proposed block length according to existing and then a grid pattern shall establish the new? I mean, isn't that pretty clear?
Right, but he's talking now about Brock block lengths.
Oh, you're back down there? Okay.
Yeah, greater than what's down below. And okay, so somebody comes in, uh I want a block length of. Thousand feet. And look, he here, I hired a an engineer who. Who gave me a traffic plan and stamped it. Okay. Why why should we let you do that? Why should we not let you do that? So I I guess what I'm what I'm suggesting is I don't know why you create a. An exception from the rule and then don't. Give us the criteria for deciding whether to apply the exception. Which which.
Well, like I said, this was originally proposed when all the block lengths were 1000 feet. And so what we wanted to try to do is provide flexibility. Um with the intent being that the goal is for a grid pattern. So. If an applicant came in with some sort of circuitous weird plan, right? Even if it's stamped by a traffic engineer, if it doesn't meet. The pattern in terms of establishing or promoting a grid system. Which in the with respect to how streets are laid out, that's what we're trying to go for here is establishing some. Measure of a grid system. I don't know what additional criteria you would find necessary, but I'm happy to hear. Um that's what we were trying to get at. And again, as I said, you know, if this is not language that feels supportive of the goal of creating a more walkable. Grid oriented environment, you can take it out.
I'm for taking it out.
What would you what do you what would you say would strike what which part on Tom?
Just the just the last sentence. I mean, I like a grid development and I like the way. We've decided to lower the block size. That all makes, as I said, are either great sense. I don't know why we would allow someone to come back and say. You know, nevertheless, I want to do one 1000 feet, a long block. And I've got an engineer who's backing me on that with a traffic plan and then. Then what does the planning commission do with that? Okay, in this instance, we'll allow it? Or we won't? That seems. I I wouldn't invite somebody to. Propose something different if we're not going to give some criteria for for deciding whether to accept it. Like it's safer, it's. Um. Provides a better view. I don't know. Increases affordability, whatever it. Whatever the criteria you want, there needs to be something in order for us to. Say, okay. Go ahead and vary from the standard.
Yeah, I I could see.
Are there any criteria? That anyone can think of? That would be conducive to making a larger block size. That and I think that's what you're talking about, isn't it, Tom? It's like, okay.
Yeah, I don't. Why why would we ever?
Brand a bigger one. Why would we unless there's a? You know, some criteria that. I mean, maybe there's a physical characteristic on a site somewhere that. You know. Like something that backs up to a. You know, another parcel that's. 600 feet long and you can't get around it in some way, but. Anyway.
But let me just ask Bert, since you've dealt with these, have you ever been in a situation where somebody wanted a? A longer one and 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 could justify that? To you?
Uh I think, you know, once again, there's always going to be. Different things, right? Because of the geography and, you know, a stream or who knows what's out there. So I think the goal here is to set kind of expectations and then if it's succeeding that. Uh then it's a discussion with the staff and the staff can. You know, review the circumstances and make a recommendation to the planning commission. I think probably eliminating that section's fine, that last sentence. And then, you know, the staff can say, hey, you know, uh here's what you need to show us, blah, 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 in order to exceed that.
Because Leila, isn't that how it works? Somebody can propose building a Taj Mahal. In the middle of, you know. Or or they can propose almost anything. Um. And obviously there are ways to deal with all of that. Does it matter then if that line is in here or not? Because it's it's pretty much assumed that if you're going to propose something out of the ordinary, it's going to have to have a lot of looks.
Yeah, so it would. It would require a variance. Yeah, and the variance is really limited.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can't you can't provide a variance for um. You know, because it sort of works better even. It's got to meet certain, usually it's topography or. Other limitations that prevent um. A certain type of development. So you'd be kind of setting it in stone, which is, like I said, it's fine. Um but you do remove any potential flexibility that that you can have. And I appreciate the discussion around. What are the uh? Criteria. Um. But what I've heard is sort of qualitative, like it promotes affordable housing or things like that. Um. That starts getting down a different path. Um we were trying to keep it really simple and connected to sort of the grid network. But again, like I said. Um that was proposed when the block lengths were still. 1000 feet. So we're trying to provide some flexibility if that's how. The block lengths were, if there was a 1200 foot block, because. If you look at some of the areas that are newer newer developed areas, those block lengths are huge. Um but again, I defer to the planning commission on this and I'm happy to strike that language, but it does remove. Any measure of flexibility that you would have, which is also fun.
Well, let me suggest, how about if we? Put this, put some standards in there. Uh so proposed block lengths that differ from the standards. For. Environmental aesthetic. Or economic reasons. Um. Shall include a proposed traffic plan and then we'll we'll have some flexibility, but but it will be cabined in a way that. We know. We'll be getting a trade off, but we'll be getting some benefit for. Going to a larger block length, which we've. Don't want for other reasons. But if you can persuade us that you you're going to save a. A grove of old growth trees or. or a stream that you, I don't know, something, then we can say, okay, give us the proposed traffic plan to deal with that. And you can do it.
Something more quantitative.
Well, my terms were actually kind of qualitative, but it would give us some grounds for evaluating this.
Yeah, I, I would urge us to stay away from any words like aesthetic, because that is 100% in the eye of the beholder.
Environmental? If, if we're not going to put any standards in there, then I don't see the point in, in saying, go ahead and propose something. I don't know how to evaluate it.
Mm hmm, right. Yes, I think the variance process provides for changes that, you know, like if there is a stream or something. So I think if it's an issue, just take it out. It's not that big of a deal, I don't think. And like with any zoning changes, you know, when it comes, you really don't know what will happen until you get your first application. And so that's the time where I think we learned that with the SRR, right? We hadn't had an application of that type. So if it requires lots of variances, in my experience, that means we need to change the code. So I think if the commission's comfortable with removing the language, just take it out.
I'm good with that.
I'd say take it out.
You too.
Agreed.
I agree.
Agreed.
Gone.
Look how quickly you did that.
Look at that, it's gone. It's already gone.
Okay. Just looking at variances, but I'll move on. Okay.
Great, thank you. Before we, before we move on, can we back up one little bit on the flag lots? Well, are you satisfied with the language? I know that flag lots have been an issue for you with the minimum frontage on the, on the flag lots. That point number one there.
Who were you referring, asking me Karen?
Uh, no, I was asking Phil. That was, that was a concern he's had in the past. So if you want to unmute yourself, Phil and-
Leila, do you know how much longer we might be? I have a, a Christmas story rehearsal as the director that I got to get to.
No, I may have to- I agree.
Sorry.
What was that Phil? You're finding the language as it is?
I am.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we didn't cover and cost that.
Um, for Frank's question, sorry, I'm going to get dizzy here really quick.
Oh boy, there's a lot. Okay.
Yeah, there's a bit. And I, you know, I would suggest we do have a planning, we do have a location before the commission on the 11th. Um, so I, you know, I want you to know, you don't have to do this all today if you don't get through it. And we can continue the hearing. I, I don't think we're going to need the full two hours in December, hopefully, for application. And then this can continue into January if you need to. So we're on track. Um, so I think Frank, I'll defer to the chair, but I think six o'clock would be our end time.
Okay.
And then we can carry on.
Yeah, Karen, I have a rehearsal that starts at 5:30.
Okay. Well, listen, I'll tell you what, this is recorded. So if you-
Yeah, I can always pick up on-
Listen to that. And if there's any issues, then we'll, we'll pick them up next time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thanks for your help. Yeah, not that I don't want you to get through it all today, but I think to do it thoughtfully, it might, it might be a long night. So let's just save our energy.
So I think we can move on, right?
Yes, we are. So we're now heading to section 4.080 off-street parking and off-street loading requirements. If you want to clarify that this again is for the transportation system plan, I got some wonderful feedback from at least one member of the commission about, you know, recommendations for changing parking standards for commercial and residential uses. That's different than what we're talking about today. This, as you can see, references changes to the building size and providing pedestrian access and circulation in parking lots that are five or more spaces. We will be, you know, once again, addressing the, for example, the residential code, sorry, ordinance standards in the residential middle housing work we'll be doing. So we'll be going through that and that's going to be a very critical, important part of the conversation that we'll be having with respect to the housing goals for the comp plan as well as how we implement that. And then as we go through the comprehensive plan process, any result changes that will be made to the ordinance will be done after the zoning, I mean, after the comprehensive plan is adopted. So just want to make that clarification, especially for folks in the public that may not, may think these two things are the same and, and they're not. So this red line change here was a recommendation from one of our commissioners and I, I staffed, I support it. So this means if there's a change to a building of more than 20%, that we reevaluate the parking requirements. And adding language, again, saying that if parking areas have five or more spaces, they must provide pedestrian access and circulation. So. So Bert, go ahead.
Looks good.
You're great. Okay. I'm not sure if that was a wave.
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Okay. Great. Barring no objections, we'll continue on. Well done. So this adds, now I'm going to just reveal some personal bias here, bike requirements, which we don't have in this town. Again, we, I got some great feedback on the different parking requirements, but that's for another day. But this adds bicycle parking requirements, which we currently do not have in any way, shape or form in the MZO. So these are the recommendations. And they're solid and would welcome any comments, thoughts or feedback on that. For at least someone to be as excited as I am.
But are these like-
See Bert's excited. He's so excited.
I, this is great, but are these standard requirements for these types of uses?
Yeah, this is.
Leila, would this include e-bikes as well or scooters or anything like that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, e-bikes, as long as there's parking spaces, I think the type of bicycle is sort of agnostic of bicycle.
So we're not making, you haven't recommended any changes other than adding a word to the vehicle requirements. We're just looking at adding parking for bicycles. Is that-
Yeah, and this is 4090 off-street parking. Yes, that's correct. Just adding bike requirements. Lee?
Thank you, Karen. So will there be some specificity in terms of the size of these parking spaces? What they look like? Is it a bike rack? Is it a enclosed area, et cetera?
Uh, it's a good question. And I'm sure Bert maybe has some thoughts on this too. I think there's flexibility. It depends on the type of building, the design of that building. I've worked on projects where they had interior bike rooms. I've worked on projects where they counted parking, it was by floor. So I think, I think allowing flexibility to, for each type of project makes sense. But would certainly welcome others' comments on that.
Well, I think flexibility makes sense, but at the same time, without having any standards, it's pretty hard to enforce anything.
Yeah, I would agree that, that typically there are dimensional requirements and kind of the nature of it. So that might be a big lift to figure that out. Maybe there's a, a, some, somebody, Tilleman or somebody else who's got some standards. I know Portland has very specific standards. And so it could be that this gets passed as it is and then standards are added to it in another round or something.
Oh, I'd be fine with that. I mean, that's beyond our capability tonight or even next month. There's a lot of discussion that we need to go into this, but I just don't want it overlooked.
That's noted and that's a, yeah, it's a great point. We can look into that and see how far we can get and then go from there. We can always come back.
And Leila, just one more point, you know, of course I have a lot of opinion on the parking here. But did, does the electric vehicle standards apply to Manzanita that Oregon passed in terms of 20% of the spaces needing to be EV ready?
Um, I don't know. I mean, let me look into that. I don't want to answer because I don't know. So I'll make a note to myself. And, you know, I apologize, you actually asked me that before.
I, I think that's, you know, as fast as that's happening, I think that's an important consideration for the community. Uh, EV electrification also, but that may be something that's down the road.
Yeah, I want to check and see if the state requirements apply to us or how, if we have a grace period. But that's a great point and I'll look into that. Any other comments before I move on?
Yeah, just, I, I just want to make sure that, because this is, it's a big change for people who are developing. I just want to make sure that, that the commission is, is okay with it as written with the understanding that we'll come up with some standards at another time.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. It's, it just bothered me that there isn't any, any specificity. So yeah, I'm, I'm going forward with it for right now.
Yeah, I, I, you know, and it meets one of the goals of the transportation plan. So that's, it's a good thing. So, okay, let's move on.
Great. Okay, transportation impact analysis. I'm also excited about this one. The, so this is all new language that we can require a TIA. Um, and under all of these conditions, so change in zoning or plan amendments, if there's operational safety concerns, an increase in traffic volume generated by 300 average daily trips or more, an increase in peak hour volume by 20%. An increase in the use of adjacent streets, the vehicles exceeding the, so if there's like, this would be, you know, we won't actually have this problem probably, but lots of trucks. And existing or proposed approaches or access connections do not meet the minimum spacing or site distance requirement or are located where vehicles entering or leaving the property are restricted, such as vehicles that are likely to queue or hesitate in approach or access connection and creating a safety surge. And then there's additional criteria here. You know, the requirements, it has to be by a traffic engineer and that, and the criteria in terms of review. And then there's conditions of approval associated with that. This actually gives us one of the tools we hadn't had before, which is construction of off-site improvements. My current ordinance doesn't allow us to do that. So in this case, it would. And gives sort of an outline of the types of impacts and things that we can require. And that it also has kind of this rule proportionality. So the requirement has to be proportional to the impact. This is a pretty long section. You may have questions. So I'll go back up to the top and we can work our way down. So this is a big change for us and a good one, I think. It also gives, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was just going to say this, this language is all suggested by the consultants, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Currently, I guess Fodder Planner is here to correct me if I'm wrong, but planning commission actually is the only entity that can require a traffic impact study. This would give staff the ability to, to do that. And, you know, oh, go ahead, Tom.
But the last condition of approval, the proportion, roughly proportional requirement, which sounds like it came from the Dolan line of cases. That, you know, the requirement of proportionality when you impose off-site improvement conditions. Is, is that language that's been approved by court somewhere? Do you know?
I don't know, but I can certainly ask. I presume so. But let me ask.
Okay, I just, I assume that it is. I just want to make sure that we don't run afoul of Dolan. For the benefit of those who don't know, that's a United States Supreme Court case that said that you can't, as a condition for approval of development, require the applicant to make improvements off-site, you know, for the benefit of the public that are disproportionate to the impact of the development on the community. I don't know much more about it than that there is such a rule and I just want to make sure that we stay within those guidelines. Whoever came up with this.
I'll, I'll double check, but I feel pretty confident that it is. That's a great point. So in like real people talk, that just means we can't tell them to do something ridiculous when their impact is low. It's a way of-
Right, they want to build a house. So we tell them, well, you have to give us a park off-site and fix it up. Playground and, and we also want a bike path two blocks over.
Well, I for one, I'm thrilled that this gives staff the opportunity to request or require a TIA because that would have saved us a lot of headache in some of our previous applications. If the applicant was to come with a TIA already in hand, it would have, you know, resolved a lot of delay. So I think that's a really good improvement and I, I for one, have no problem with any of this.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Yeah, I was totally unaware, Leila, that you didn't have that authority at this point. So I, I can totally support this.
Great. Okay. Well, you have a little, you know, something comes up between now- Well, you have a little, you know, something comes up between now and December, please do just let us know. And I'll just say that broadly speaking, you know, things come up, we reviewed this like for the fifth time, and we were like, oh, we caught a couple things. So if you do see something between now and December, please do let staff know because we can make those adjustments ahead of time and make this more efficient for you. But we do want to get it right, so thanks. Okay, this goes on to multi-family commercial pedestrian access and circulation sightings, so it's adding a section. Pedestrian access and circulation are required to provide for safe, reasonably direct and convenient access for pedestrians. So there's a discussion about pedestrian walkway systems. And and within the development, basically saying that the walkway is direct, reasonably direct, it's designed for pedestrian safety and convenience. The networks connect to all the primarily, primary building entrances, so it's trying to create a walkable environment within a kind of a multi-family or if, if we won't have the large-scale commercial development. I won't name a local parking lot that does not have this, and it makes it really hard to get around that parking lot without almost getting right over. It gives direction on where the walkway, but it's a driveway. Should be just the city, let's say the Planning Commission. Sorry. See, found one right there. Where walkways, you know, kind of where there's conflicts between crosswalks and driveways. What materials should be used? We added some language here about decomposed granite and meeting ADA requirements specifying that. And then this was sort of redundant from, I think it was in earlier sections we took up. And then multi-use pathways. Bert, did you have a comment? Sorry, I was looking up at the other.
Oh, yeah, I just, does, two, two questions. Does the city have landscaping requirements internal to a parking lot? That's one question. And the second question, well, maybe answer that. The second question is really as it relates to design standards, like street design standards and, you know, parking lot design standards. I mean, like diagrams and sections and stuff like that. Does the city have that or?
We do. I don't know the, the parking lot standards by heart. But Dan, we do have cross-sections in, I can't remember the sounding, the ordinance number, but our street standards. We do have cross-sections in that. And then the TSP also includes cross-sections now, which are codified here through some of the tables, but the design standards are in there.
Okay, all right. That, that helps. Just want to make sure it's, it all gets clear. And especially on the landscape requirements inside a parking lot, that'd be great to have those very clear.
Any other thoughts, suggestions, feelings or comments? We're making tracks. I let Franco thinking we wouldn't get through this. I'm gonna stop talking because who knows, maybe I'll jinx us. Okay. Section 5030, standards coming conditional uses. So this gives the Planning Commission the ability to impose, in addition to standards and requirements, additional conditions. So it added a few additional sort of guidance for you, although you can add more conditions if you want. The transportation improvements intended to minimize the impacts, protect transportation facilities, corridors or sites. Improvements may include mitigation measures identified in a TIA. So if a TIA came in and said, this project's going to have X impact. That can be mitigated through X, Y, and Z, then you can make that a condition of approval for that land use application. And with this language, you know, and staff writes the initial findings, we would probably already do that. But this gives you additional authority to add that. Including transit facilities or access, like I know this isn't, you know, we don't have Trimat here, we don't have a robust transportation system. So this may seem kind of pro forma from our consultant, but I hope that, you know, transit will become part of our future here, speaking as a former transit-oriented development planner. So I think it's important to have that in here, even though it might not be entirely relevant to much of our community. I think it's still important to have. And then pedestrian and bicycle facility access or improvement. So if you're working on a large site and you see that, oh, this would make a great connection, it could possibly work, then you would have the ability to help mitigate traffic impact by providing alternative access, alternative modes access. So you start to see a theme here throughout the TSP ordinance amendments is that it's really trying to prioritize bike and pet access in our community. And it works when you start putting this stuff into play, it really does. So it's for your consideration. Oh, you're muted.
All right. I wonder if in this section, you would maybe add connectivity, you know? For instance, in many communities, there's a requirement to extend a right-of-way within a subdivision to connect a potential future subdivision right-of-way, as an example. But that might give some flexibility to the commission to take a look at those and then suggest, you know, staff and the commission suggest some connectivity aspects as it relates to the grid, as example, or roadways.
Good suggestion.
It could be protect transportation facilities, corridors or sites. And provide connectivity, just add and, and provide something like that. Corridors, sites and provide you know, connectivity or some, something like this.
How does that work?
Yeah, I think that gives the flexibility of, for a particular instance, that something should come up and then, you know, makes a lot of sense to at least get a, a right-of-way set so that a second or third access point could be completed in the future.
That's a good suggestion. Thanks. John?
Well, I, I completely agree with Bert on that issue. My question is, do we want to take it beyond conditional uses and make it more of a standard for all uses? And I'm talking about the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity.
No. So you're saying why not for kind of all modes?
Yeah, well, for a, for a, you know, and as, you know, and as used, you know, and a, a standard development, even if it meets, if it's not a conditional use, it's just a by rights use, the connectivity piece of it maybe should still be there.
Should all of these be there?
Think about that because I, I feel like they are.
Like they are already?
Yeah.
Is a PUD a conditional use?
No, it isn't.
Well, certainly anything the size of a PUD. I mean, I have in my head upcoming, you know, things that we, I think we see on the horizon that may require this or would, we would want this in it.
Yeah, let me put some thought into that. I feel like it's covered. And I can have our our planner, our transportation planner, take a hard look at that and come back to you.
I'm, I'm wondering if it would be more appropriate in the subdivision standards if, to put it there rather than in the zoning ordinance.
So, good suggestion, Karen. We'll take a look at that.
Great.
Leila, could you refresh my memory? Is the the development at the end of Dorcas, the little small unit development up at the end of Dorcas, the east end of Dorcas? Is that a conditional use or is that a PUD?
I mean, classic street cottages.
Classic street cottage, classic cottages.
That's a PUD.
Okay. Well, then, that, that's the kind of piece, I think, if, if it's not included, should be.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll look at that. That's a good suggestion. Okay. Should we scroll on? See what we can do in the next 10 minutes or so?
Yeah, we, we do need time to review the minutes of the meeting, so let's.
Yeah, I'll defer to you, Karen, whenever you're ready to conclude for today.
Let's do this, this section here and then we'll we'll underline where we left off.
Okay. So 6090, transportation improvements and uses permitted. It's just making clear that these facilities are are permitted outright and that transportation facilities, services and improvements are not subject to land use review or approval in the zoning ordinance. Or subdivision ordinance, including but not limited to the PUD site plan approval, design review, conditional uses and public deliberations inherent. So I read that to mean that putting transportation improvements in are just, it's an outright permitted use. Phil?
What qualifies as a transportation facility?
Looking at definitions, Bert, look at me. I mean, really, it's, I think, a roadway, a bikeway, or pedestrian access path, a trail, so anything that promotes the use of, like, just promotes transportation.
Nothing with regards to a building or structure?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question because you repeat that for me.
A building or a structure is not included in a transportation facility, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Would that would require?
Would something like a, like a bus stop shelter be part of that? I mean, that, that's the only thing I can think of that might be a pertinence, I guess, the structure.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking of things that are in the right of way.
Okay.
I'll check into that.
Okay.
Any questions?
And I, I, I would like to submit that if there is a structure that, that there's a design review attached to it. At least in the commercial zone unless we're going to do extend design review beyond that into the other zones as well.
Okay.
That's a, that's a bigger discussion for a different day.
Any other comments here? Section 9060 is just basically saying any amendments must be consistent with the TSP. I think anyone would argue with that. You can. I want to sit down for a good debate. Just procedure for mailed notice that we need to notice ODOT in any public agencies providing transportation facilities. There are legislative changes, subdivision proposal that affects a transportation facility that's operated by ODOT or any proposal within the airport overlay zone. You know, ODOT funded this grant, so I'm sure that's why this is in here, but I don't object to this. I think it's good to be noticing our partners and it's helpful for staff to have this kind of guidance, so. Karen, should I keep going?
Oops, sorry, I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we, we stop here.
We're so close.
We got close. Well, let me ask this, is everybody willing to stay a couple minutes past six? So that we can
We're almost there.
Finish this. Okay, let's, let's do that. I don't see anybody jumping out of their skins.
Okay, I think it's pretty straightforward. So just consolidated review for transportation facilities and land use plans. That review and approval for land use plans that affect, include or involve transportation facilities should be consolidated with any required review or approval processes for the transportation facility. So just trying to bundle it all together in one location. Thoughts about that? Okay. This is it, people, right here. Just access, so we had some additions here, which I thought were good ones. Just access each lot, personal shell, but upon a street or an alley, or have easement access for width of at least 20 feet. And I think that 20 feet, Dan, we make sure we capture the fire access. I think we've seen a lower number here initially and we proposed 20 for that reason. Let's see, a couple hands. I think Phil was first and then Bert, sorry.
I'd say we did that so that way it would be essentially a 10-foot width drive path in your five-foot shoulders. So it kind of gave access in and out.
Phil, did you have a comment or question?
I do. What are you gonna do about existing flag lots that don't meet this criteria?
Well, I think existing lots that are already flatted are grandfathered in, so there's not there's nothing we can do about that. But future, if any, flag lots would have to meet this standard.
Okay, I recall from the meeting that we had with our two experts that came our two experts that came in and gave us that talk that the access way for a flag lot was just decided, the width was decided by the fire marshal. Does 20 feet meet with his approval?
We can check. I mean, Dan, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but I don't know that it's his. I think it's their standards that are written for him to interpret. So we can check fire standards for side access, right? So what is the required width? So we'll look into that. I think Bert, did you have a comment? And then John, we'll go to you.
Oh, I, I think it's just that, you know, as the residential component and presumably the mixed use component takes a look, we take a look at that after the, as part of the comprehensive plan update, that this may evolve from this particular standard. But probably for now, it seems pretty good. And I think Dan clarified that like we have a 10-foot paved area in some of our streets, but the right of way is wider than that. So this, those would comply to the, with this.
Thanks for that. John, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to say we, we have some language about flag lots earlier on in the ordinance. And I just want to make sure we coordinate whatever we do here with that to make sure we don't conflict one way or the other.
I think of that one, it's 20 feet with a 10-foot drive, I think. Isn't that what it is, if I remember right? So this 20 feet would be consistent.
It would be consistent. Okay.
And then I think
I can't scroll this thing up, so I couldn't check.
And I think what, what is fairly common is to have a shared driveway between two lots, you know, stuff like that, with half on one and half on the other lot, so.
Should we, should we indicate shared access in the ordinance? Or the capability or the flexibility for shared access in the ordinance?
I, I'll leave that. It seems, I don't know if you need it or not. So Leila, do you think we need it?
I don't, I don't think so, but let's, let's investigate it and I'll come back to you. And that's usually a, a deal with private property owners. Phil, did you have another comment?
Yes, I have a situation of about 100 feet from me where two flag lots share the same access.
Okay, we'll look into that. Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was going to suggest, we've, we've dealt with that issue on several of the commercial properties on Monita where people have had to, had to do, record a, a shared access agreement so that, so that we, they could make some of the small buildings work. So yeah, that's something, I know we've done that many times.
Okay. Okay. Well, the final one is blocks. And again, this is now, sorry, I should have noted we're in our subdivision ordinance. This actually gets to some of the criteria about block size we were talking about earlier, but the length, width and shape of blocks shall take into account the need for adequate lot size, street width, circulation patterns. And it adds here, and this might actually address the question we had earlier, street connectivity. We could add bike and pedestrian access here and kind of address that comment above. Folks are comfortable, existing lot configurations, existing buildings in conformity with the topography of the site.
Yeah, this may go a little far, but existing or future lot configurations.
Any other comments? All right. Well, good work, everyone. We have a couple of items to kind of come back to you on, although I don't think anything major. If you do see something between now and next month, please do let us know. I'll endeavor to work with our planner to get some of these questions addressed and come back to you with an update that we can hopefully discuss during a meeting in December. Worst case, we can discuss it in January. And then the next step, just so we can talk about steps real quick, the next step would be that we would send this off to legal for review. And I think, Tom, that's where we would get our kind of final review of, say, the DOL and language, for example, and get their comments and feedback and then, but planning commission can recommend approval of a language as is, subject to the city attorney's review. And then we would, staff, me, me would draft an ordinance for planning or for the city council. Likely in February would be the earliest because the TSP wouldn't be officially adopted until 30 days after the second reading. Well, actually it would be January, but I don't think I'll be prepared to get this before then with legal review by January. So that's, that's what we'll endeavor to do. So yeah, we'll, we'll share this with our, our planner, get those questions answered for you, hopefully have sufficient time next month, which just to remind folks, we're meeting on December 11th and we will be bringing the city hall project. So just to remind you again to please spend some time reviewing the design review criteria, which is what you'll be asked to review that application on. So this is going to be a design review. You're first as a team together. And if you do have any questions or want any staff support on that, please do reach out to us. Almost said do hesitate to ask. Don't hesitate to ask. We're happy to help with that. Just to get you comfortable with the process, but it's pretty straightforward and hoping for a really solid application. So yeah, I think that's all I've got. Karen, I'll hand it over to you. We might even be able to end on time for close.
We just might. But I just wanted to double check with Scott to make sure that we didn't have any hands from the public raised during our discussion. I just wanted to make sure since this is their opportunity to, to shape this ordinance language as well.
Karen, no, I didn't have any hands raised.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so we have the minutes of the, I think it's the September, October 16th meeting. I think you got it in your packet. I'm wondering if there are any additions, corrections, spelling errors? Anything grievous? Anus mistakes? During that, I will certainly entertain a motion to adopt. The minute says submitted.
So moved.
That was Phil?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And that was John?
Lee.
I'm getting used to your names. Oh, that was Lee. Not getting used to your names. Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So those minutes are approved. We have our update on our next month's meeting. Any other business before we adjourn? Great. Thank you to staff for all of this work on this. It's been a long, long project and I'm really glad that we're getting close to the end on the first piece of our ordinance review. So thank you.
Well, thanks for the hard work. Appreciate everyone's comments.
Yep. Okay.
Great work. Bye-bye.
All right, we're adjourned.
All right.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
See you guys.
Yeah, you too.
That's right.